...address the board meeting so at this time? No? Okay, um, since the previous meeting of February 19th, any errors or omissions noted? Make a motion to... Will it be accepted as read or printed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, bills, our center, are there any additions or deletions?
No, we don't have that.
Make a motion to accept the bills as printed?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pay the bills. Correspondents?
We have one letter this evening from Montgomery Hose Hook and Ladder. Dear Mayor and trustees, we wish to inform you of a new member who has been approved to our company for a probationary period of six months. That's Justin Genwa. Please act on this matter and we thank you for your time in this matter. Respectfully yours, Dennis Reynolds. We need a motion, please.
Okay, need a motion to approve?
I need a motion to approve since, uh, Justin Genwa.
You have a motion and a second? Did you catch those, son?
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's all we have.
Alright. Okay, I have a resolution for election candidates for this election. This will be, uh, Resolution 2019-12. Polling place hours can address the nominated. Whereas the next general election for officers of the Village Rousas Point should be held on March 19th, 2019, whereas the Board of Trustees is required by section 15-104, subparagraph 3B of the election law to adopt a resolution designating the polling places. The hours of polls shall be open and addresses of those nominated now therefore be resolved. The Board of Trustees of the Village Rousas Point designates the polling place for each election district to be all set home, Rousas Point Civic Center, 39 Lake Street. That the hours during which the polls shall be open shall be 12 o'clock noon until 9:00 PM, and that the candidates nominated for office according to the provision of Article 15 Village Election Law are Jamie Gadway, Rousas Point trustee, two-year term; Kathleen Woodward, Rousas Point, two-year term trustee; Ronald Blanc, Rousas Point trustee, two-year term; Dale Menard, Rousas Point trustee, two-year term. It further resolves that the village clerk is hereby directed to publish this resolution in full and approximately public and to post a copy of this resolution in at least six conspicuous public places within the village on or before March 9th, 2019, and a copy be placed at the polling place. This resolution's resolutions will take effect immediately. I move it to the floor. I need a second.
Second.
You have a second? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Uh, next thing I have is Pfizer update, okay? Two things on that. Um, we met briefly with Dave Kreutz from ERS. He brought us up to date on the Pfizer progress site. Uh, demo is ahead of schedule. They're trying to keep two buildings to repurpose, that's the two warehouses in the back. Um, they're doing that for two reasons. One is that they're, that they're concerned with is that keeping them on the tax rolls, um, so they'd still pay tax on it. They've met with the assessor and with Pfizer for that. Um, I guess they have to talk Pfizer into letting them keep those buildings. They estimate that the cost of repurposing them to make them rentable is about a million dollars. Um, they're optimistic on a new tenant for new construction. Um, they're pursuing a railroad spur. All the slabs will remain after demo. And progress on pollution abatement is progressing, um, properly. The problem they had up there is there's five miles of, of piping for pharma chemicals or product. It's those glass pipes, and they have to be careful while they take them down. Now, we had, Donna's been in contact with the DEC, and we had thought we had something set up for the March 18th meeting, but apparently, which I didn't realize, was that the DEC guy that's gonna give the presentation is from Albany, and I thought he was coming up from Raymont, and he's gonna make it on that date, so we'll reschedule as soon as we can, as soon as he can get here. Uh, let's see. Computer update. We purchased two computers on Friday, um, one of whom for the, um, code enforcement thing to put their new program on, because apparently their old one wasn't, didn't have the capacity for the program, I guess, that's what I was told. And we purchased a second computer and a printer for the, for the historian. These are both, we have both in hand, on hand. Um, we've, we've requested the, um, cinema company.
Twin State.
Twin State to come up and hook them up, and the reason we have to have them is because, um, they have to tie them into our system. So, they'll be up. Did you get ahold of them today? Were you able to?
They have our information. I don't have the confirmed date yet.
Okay, so we're hoping by the end of the week, but if not, probably by the end of the next week, they won't be online. Um, we were able to buy these, well, the state contract price is about eighteen hundred dollars, same computer, with a lot of extra programming that we don't need. So, we purchased these for 500 apiece. So, that's all we got. And we're looking at, we're gonna be talking, Steve's gonna be talking to the librarian, who's here tonight, seeing if we can get the library one for that deal too. Because apparently, these are great for reading your email, typing up letters on the WordPerfect and a few other things. They don't have like architectural engineering programs in them, and tax programs, and all kinds of other stuff in there, and then, anyway.
Are these new?
Brand new.
Brand new?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, the one, we did, uh, we did get one, a used one from the county about a month ago. And it's a fine computer, nothing wrong with it, except, well, what's wrong with it is it's got like Windows 8, we need Windows 12, 10, or Windows 40, or whatever we need. And to upgrade it to what to match the rest of ours would cost like four, 500 bucks extra. We'll get a new one for that, with that in it, so that's the way we went. And, um, think. You have the, um, the rec center, uh, balance sheet for the, since the last meeting? We are, uh, you noticed on here, the last two weeks in February, did you guys all get this?
Yep.
Last two weeks in February shows a thousand dollar loss approximately for each week. And last year it was a nine hundred dollar plus for one of those weeks and a 300 dollar loss for the other week. So I asked what happened, you know, what the deal was, and what the deal was is that, um, last year we hosted the sectionals because our Coopers made it up the line higher, and then, so they had to run a lot of extra ice time, and that's why we didn't. And this year they kinda didn't make it past the first cut, I guess, and that's why we didn't collect. Other than that, for the year overall, we're about seven thousand dollars less of a loss than we had last year. So we're, we're closing the gap, so we'll surely. Anyway, anybody have any questions or comments about this? Okay, I'll be doing some stuff in the executive session, but I think it's covered under Trustee Arno. So I will go to, uh, Trustee Arno.
Uh, the only thing I got is, uh, the water plant, uh, changed that pipe that was all rotted and stuff like that. Mr. Palki will, I'm sure, tell you more about it when we talk to him. And, uh, we had four firemen in the cold water rescue pass the glass this weekend, and I left my paper over to the fire station with names where, so, but I'd like to recognize them. That was a bucket glass, it was pretty intense. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
This is the second, yeah. Was that the, two, three, maybe not, there's like five or six Montgomery Hose Cream, reimbursed them a hundred dollars apiece? Would that be those people? Or is that for something else?
That's for something else. That's under vault, but I mean, I think, uh, he's doing, uh, first aid class.
Okay, 'cause that listed the names of the bills if you need to.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Trustee Gar?
Yes, uh, updating vacancies. Uh, I guess we don't have, uh, any applications for folks that we advertise for, am I correct? We don't have many applicants.
For the electrical positions?
Uh, we have some that are, I don't believe they're gonna qualify through sales service.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. Okay. I think this, the Electoral Department, everything to do with it ought to be really have some more front-runner activity on it. We ought to extend our advertising, help beyond. You know, it was, it was a nice ad in the MBUA, and I have it right here, but the problem, the problem being was that, was that the application expired on the same day that the publication went out. There's nobody got.
Adam was listing.
That's the second, that's the second, uh, advertisement in there?
That is.
The previous one, it was in the, the week, the two weeks prior.
Do we have to, with, with an ongoing thing like this, do we have to, uh, list a closing deadline for, for ads?
This was the date that was voted on by, by the board.
We don't move forward. We don't have to.
We can extend it, I mean, I think there'll be substantial discussion on this this evening.
Okay.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
I, I think.
Alright, and the other, uh, the other thing that I have is I'd like an executive session with, uh, as it was last time, just the mayor and the board, uh, to discuss personnel.
Can I hear a second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to follow up on Trustee Gar's comments on the electric department. I think, uh, the board has failed to realize, probably the gravity of the situation in the electric department, I think we need to move this up to probably our number one priority. I think we have to really go into some type of processable until we get the proper staffing in the electric department. I think we should have weekly meetings, plan our strategies, and follow, uh, our progress as we go, and I think we need to give some professional includeers throughout the state to find candidates, and we may have to, uh, make our, our offers more generous, but we need to do something now. We can't wait till the last minute. This could be a, a serious problem maintaining our intensive electric utilities in Rousas Point. I think we need to go on basically emergency mode and start running on this 100%. That's all I'd say.
I don't disagree with you, Trustee Genwa, it's just that we have been doing that, we've been working on this every single day, for several hours a day.
Well, what exactly does that mean, we've been working on it? What, besides some ads, what are we doing?
Well, we're, we're reshaping this. Uh, today, I'm gonna talk about an executive session, but today we talked to somebody about it, quite frankly. Some of that I'll send to executive session, because it's personnel, but.
I'm not talking about personnel, I'm talking about, I think we need some senior leadership in the electric department, and we're gonna have to go outside to get it, and pay to get it, and I think we have to aggressively get it now. And there's nobody eternally, I believe, that they can apply, or whatever, if there's anybody there. But we need at least two new bodies in the electric department, and we've got zero applications. That tells me there's a big, big problem. We can't wait till Mr. Palki retires and say, oh, I wonder what.
I agree.
He can take over.
I agree, totally. I totally agree. I identify this as the number one thing we've got coming from, who was that, Benny? About a month ago, when Eric was gonna present? From that day onwards.
I think we ought to get Mr. Palki involved in this, talk to him a little bit about what, what in deals and stuff.
We have, but, no, we could talk more.
Yeah.
Wide open on this, I'm wide open for any suggestions anybody has on this. Okay. Okay, Trustee Menard, were you done, sir?
I just, I just had one more thing. I noticed on the village website that we've had an advertisement for a maintenance worker at Public Works, wouldn't it just come on here? We had agreed a couple, three months ago to just put that on the back burner, not advertise for it. I don't, I don't recall authorizing any advertising for it. Is that an old ad? On the village website?
It's been funded, the position's been funded right along.
Well, why is it being, why is it?
Why is it being filled now? Because we had an opening, then we had, one of the employees went down with an injury for several weeks, and we were able to luckily find a retired employee that would come back part-time. Now, given that it takes about three months to hire anybody here, I thought that we should get the ball rolling on this, that we've got some staffing for this summer. The way people are, are moving around from here, what the potential is for people leaving, we need some help. We need to be, we need to be staffed at proper levels. We've got a lot of work to do in the summertime, we can have two work crews working simultaneously on different projects if we have enough people. We have people going out on extended sick leave, of which we've had, across the board, two or three people at a time out for lengthy periods of time, and I think that we're, we're low on help. We're not going above established staffing levels, we're not going above budgeted staffing levels, and given that we just can't do like we used to do, and put an ad in the paper, and two weeks later you're hiring somebody, I think that we need to keep the pipeline filled up.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't disagree with anything you said, except that the point of hiring is for the board to authorize the position to be filled, not to unilaterally advertise for something and then tell, tell us how it's gonna go down.
The board has, has the authority to approve hiring, to interview people, and they will be, if we get any applications. We can have any applications.
I understand.
Well, you gotta start somewhere.
I agree, I just say your communication on this was zero.
And I don't know anything about, anybody said that we weren't gonna fill that position.
Oh, that.
I'm not aware of that.
I've actually, I've heard that, but I'm not taking a stand on that, I'm just taking a stand of the communication, getting the whole board involved, not one person acting unilaterally.
Nobody is.
Why you put an ad out there?
It's been open for two years.
Open doesn't mean we advertise it, we could have it in the budget and not ever hired. If you wanna hire, I can support you on that, just tell us.
I thought that we'd been through this last summer. That's all, Chris. Okay, Trustee Menard?
I have nothing for this.
Trustee Genwa?
Uh, thank you for the Pfizer update. Uh, I am very anxious to hear, um, DEC.
Yep.
My position is still that I'm concerned about the health, the welfare of the residents of Rousas Point, until we get some independent, uh, measurements, uh, of any possible contamination. I'm gonna keep pushing to, to get those results in, so we haven't, so we haven't finally gotten an answer to this. Uh, as for the, the rest of the Pfizer property, uh, I've heard that they are leaving all the foundations in place, which tells me that basically this place is gonna be abandoned. That's, uh, that's my opinion only, and I, I think I'm pretty firm ground with that. Uh, second point is, uh, just a question on the civic center. I know, uh, you had to take over, due to circumstances, you had to take over responsibility to the civic center.
Well, I will be, not yet, I haven't.
Right, but, uh, and, you know, I, I applaud you for, for putting the time in to do that. But last year we talked about getting a plan in place to close that revenue gap, and, uh, and I still see a big revenue gap, but what I don't see is any plan in place to actually close it up. We can't raise rates on it, on the current customers, the skating clubs and hockey clubs, they can't pay anymore, and I don't support any of that. Last year, we promised we'd see a plan, how we'd utilize this building. It's been a year almost, and there's nothing, and is there something to the place? I know you're new on this, but still, you've got that responsibility for the people in place to get that plan here, and right now I see nothing, unless there's something that we haven't been told.
Well, I was, I've been informed that, uh, it hasn't been put together in a plan with a bow wrapped on it, and said, here's the, here's the giant plan, but improvements have been made steadily in the past six months or so, starting with like the hockey skate round, or the, the ice skating, the skate round. That's brought a lot of money up. Uh, I was talking to Aaron tonight, and he said, this weekend they took about $218 on public skating, first time they've been over $200 in years. They're, uh, they're increasing, I think, the hours. Steve, wanna comment on this?
Uh, sure.
What's been done in the rec center here?
Yeah, no, so, uh, I mean, you, we don't have a plan written down, as the mayor said, with a bow, I certainly can do that for you. But throughout this year, this board's been pretty active about ensuring cleanliness, awareness online, social media, access, uh, which we have to improve on, actually all of those, and the purchase of the skate sharpener, re-establishing that kind of trust with our members. And if you recall, um, at the beginning of this year, was, I guess it was about last year at this time, I said it was gonna take at least two years to really get it turned around, and that's still the case. You know, so we're, we're a year in-ish to these kinds of changes, and the bigger, the bigger section that we should also be focusing on is access in the shoulder seasons and in the summer, and using this facility in some different way. So, an example of that is very simply, this isn't exactly a revenue thing, but it's to, as soon as the ice is out and the rink is dry, uh, we've been, you know, Jan Leturno's been really active with pickleball, getting people inside into the facility during the day, which is the right thing to do for this type of thing, just getting folks to use the facility, we have all the resources we need, we've got restrooms, we've got, you know, lights, we've got heat, all that kind of stuff. Uh, so getting people inside to use that facility is, is one of those goals that you were mentioning. So, I mean, if you want me to pull something together, uh, about, you know, what really those next six months should look like, what the next year should look like, I could certainly do that for you.
No, I don't think, it must be in your position, you don't have to do that, I'm not putting any more, uh, work on you, and I, I know that you can easily, uh, you know, if this was a full-time job, you can easily turn this place around, so thank you for that information.
Sure.
I just think we made a good stride in the wintertime to where we're doing it. I think we need to promote this more in the summertime. I mean, in order to turn this around to where it's profitable, we need to do something here and some. I mean, I think, basically because we're running this six months out of the year, that's why we're running it during the whole, because, you know.
Yeah, so I just, I also wanted, you mentioned an interesting word, and, and this is, which is profitable, and as a private business, profit means very much one thing ultimately, is what that, what the bank account looks like. Municipally, profit can mean a lot of different things, and I'm not spinning it on purpose here for any other reason, other than to, just to show that, yeah, you do wanna generate that revenue, but that's not really the outcome of the facility. What it should be is usability, and the more people that can use the facility, the better. And one of the, one of the things that, uh, that, that is interesting to me is if you don't, you don't skate, then, or you're not interested in that, if that's not something you or your family does, then, then you're really not using this facility, and that's okay. But we should try to look at other ways in which we can engage the public into this facility in any way possible. I'm used to that model of singular uses, um, like the crate center, for example. That's singular use in the wintertime, but then the shoulder seasons, there's different things that go on, and different events that can be created, and we, we also made a stab at that this fall with the Most in the Coast event, which I believe will continue and become much stronger as time goes on. So, that's an example of how we can engage people in activities, things that build community pride, things that are, you know, they don't always have to be health and wellness oriented, but that's good if they are. That's also what is profitable in a municipal facility. All that said, that bottom line still matters, if the budget is tight, then you also have to make sure that you're narrowing that gap between expense and revenue, always, that should be a focus, it's not to absolve that requirement, it's just that profitability means a number of different things when it's a municipal government.
I know that when I was doing the budget 20, 25 years ago, it seemed to me, I recall, the general fund had to, had to contribute to the rec center, uh, five to eight thousand a year. In other words, we're losing that much on the ice to make it work. And I would say, now, right now, we're behind about seventeen thousand for the year, but if you put that in nineteen eighty-nine dollars, we're probably maybe even a little ahead from what we're losing back then, now. But I'd like to see it balanced, so it paid for itself, it came out even, sure I would. I really would. But, um, can I, we're trying to do that, we're trying to do it by efficiencies in the equipment, uh, get the use up, but, you know, let's face it, the summertime, the six months out of the year when you're using the whole recreation center, it generally doesn't bring in any money because it's free things outside, baseball, soccer games, all that kind of stuff, and that's what we contribute as a municipality to the public, so we provide this. So, I mean, like I said, the, the goal is always in the back of our mind to get it as close to balanced as we could. I mean, it'd be great if we made a profit on it, but, you know.
And you have to also look at from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, or twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, where we're at now, we're seven thousand dollars better, lower than.
Close the gap by seven thousand.
Close the gap by seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, but there's a lot of personal costs in there.
We're, we're in the right direction.
Maybe, I'm not sure. We'd like to see a stable amount of money allocated personnel, see exactly where we are. I know our situation now is pretty slow, and I'd like to see exactly personnel costs on, you know, you don't know that for a while, you know.
I mean, what would happen, those positions block so long, you know, we couldn't actually put somebody in because somebody else was still here and still is here, but not here, you know? Anything else?
No, I don't.
Is it? Okay, other reports, uh, let's see. Well, I'll start with Mr. Coop.
Well, just maintaining the thing, I just waited to go to school, I haven't received anything on that yet. By the way, I appreciate the, getting us a computer that might work a little bit better, to get it down, to get it worked up, but things are picking up a little bit, a couple contractors come in, ask for, uh, what's a building permit, some things like that. I don't know how the summer's gonna go, but it's looking a little better. It was a little bleak there for a few weeks, but, so that's about as far as I wanna go with that.
Okay. Mr. Palki?
Uh, just to comment.
Busy week?
Yes. To comment on Trustee Arno's, uh, remarks about the water plant. We changed a ten-inch line that goes through the floor from the industrial system, that goes out to the eighteen-inch main that goes to the water tower, it's quite a project. Cut a big hole in the floor, and Public Works did an excellent job changing that out this week. Troubleshooting up to their wastewater plant, we solved quite a few problems up there, electrical problems, so, uh, we've been busy. The sidewalks are starting to come back, you know, with the ice buildup and the storms we had, at least now you can see cement again, so it's a lot easier for the people to walk. Just they have to have patience, it's the way the North Country is. Any questions for me? Everything good?
I question you every day, Brian, as you know.
Yeah, I know.
Every day.
I think you guys do a hell of a job on maintaining the village, I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
Like the water plant.
I was amazed, I thought that was gonna be like a two-week job, I really did. At least, uh.
Gotta give you guys a lot of credit for doing that.
Adam estimated how long it would take him, and he went, one hour over, what is this gonna take? Because that can go any different direction, huh? It could've turned into a two-week job.
This week I'm gonna meet with, uh, Susan at the library, so we can, uh, work on, uh, putting the shelving in, down in the cellar. Um, I talked to Hobart Brothers today, they're firming up our quote, so we can do the PO for the furnaces, so we can get them at least in place before we'll get them hung on the wall and start piping them up.
I contacted I E E P, uh, Saturday, and we can do spray foam insulation in the attic of the library, as soon as we get three bids, and we, we authorize the work to be done when we want it done, and send the bill to I E E P and they pay it.
I E E P was gonna provide contractors to give us prices.
No, I'm not gonna do that.
No, they don't do that.
Well, I told you what the problem is, is that they used to have contractors, and they had Dave Trudeau.
Right, he provided that.
Doing it out of Serenac Lake. Well, if he's gone, the guy that replaced him, Ken McMullin, is from southwest of Syracuse, and he's basically not gonna come up here, and he said for municipal projects like this one, that we could do our own estimate, like this, um, you know, get our own.
Again, we have to.
We have to. Well, I could, you know, we could make him do it, we could say, we want you to come up with it, but I don't see where that would benefit us at all. I mean, we know who to call, we'll get three quotes, figure out the best one for us, we can do the best job, and it's not a bid thing, we're not spending our money on it, it's money that's come back to us from I E E P, so I think the bidding procedure is a little different for that, and they approve them, they're the ones that approve it. So for the municipal projects that we have, which is mainly, uh, LED streetlights, we're getting LED lights for the basement of the library, and this insulation project, wherever that occurs.
How about, how about requesting private citizens, I've had, I said, uh, one complaint that they got. How about, how about requesting private citizens, I've had, I've had, uh, one complaint, but they got no response from I E E P on there.
They have to call me, I tell them when I, when they call me, I call them right back, talk it over with them, and I relay it to I E E P, and I tell them if they don't hear anything in a couple of weeks, call me right back, and nobody's called me back. So, I don't know, I mean, I'm the contact for this, and if I don't know that they haven't been contacted, I have no way of, you know, they have to call me, can I tell them that, when I tell them, when I set them up with this? Explain the program, what is, what's available and everything, and...
Has this new contact been reasonable in terms of getting back to you, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, this, generally, I, I sent him this Saturday at one twenty-nine PM, and he sent it back Saturday at ten eleven PM.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
On Saturday, so...
But Dave Trudeau's...
Well, he was great, I loved working with Dave, but I mean, he's not doing it anymore. So, that's, you know, we're doing the best we can, we do have the fund built up a little bit, and I've told people that, that we can, I don't know what we are right now, but it's, we've got enough that we can start entertaining residential, uh, applications again. You know, they're, they're limited at fifteen hundred dollars, but they can, uh, they can start, they can put in for them whenever they want. We never did shut them off, but we didn't, it kinda slowed down this winter, we didn't have as many calling as we did last year. And I think we're all caught up on everyone that's in the pipeline, except for the ones that have just come in in the last month or so, which has only been one or two, so...
Okay, uh, one other thing, um, I went around today and got all the model numbers and serial numbers out of all the radios and all the portables. Uh, apparently there's a program that Clinton County Dispatch, I'm working with Eric today, um, they're replacing them free of charge. So they're upgrading all our radio systems throughout the whole village, there's like twenty-seven radios that we have. So, it's gonna be a, a plus to us because our batteries are starting to cycle, and, uh, some of the radios aren't in the best of the condition. So, they're upgrading this whole system in the North Country here, they already did the fire department, so now they're working on like the public works department, so we have to get the information filled out, sent back to them, and then they bring us all the brand-new radios to swap them all out, so we'll be in really good shape when it comes to communication with our radio system. Just to let you know what's going on with that.
That's good. Steve, do you have anything?
No, I think all my things have been covered throughout, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any board, the public wish to address the board, do you have any library stuff, or something?
Well, I want to say thank you for coming and looking at that attic, and Brian for, um, coming to get those shelves, um, just that, as soon as we get those shelves in, I can start getting that back to you, get it out, we can get things organized, work a little bit more efficient there.
The library, it turns out, that, we talked about this last meeting, the floor of the attic, meaning the ceiling of the library, is fully insulated.
Right, and then it has the trap floor.
Yeah, but the problem is that big room is wide open to the elements, you know, there's no insulation at all. So, in the summer you've got this big massive hot up there, and in the summertime you've got a big massive cold. Like, set a big ice cube on your roof, even though it's got insulation, it's still gonna be cold.
Yeah, it's two months a year, we can run up there and take, uh, you know, we keep files that you have to keep for seven years and what have you up there. Um, it could be used a lot better if it's insulated, so that would be one of those.
So, you know, like I said, they'll have to get, figure out how I suppose finish the basement and do the attic later on, there's no sense, they'll hurry on at this time of year. All right, um, you know, entertain a motion, Mr. Mayor, recess.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, I just wanted to report that the auditors were in the office on Thursday and Friday, and that you'll begin to report in the near future.
Okay.
Everything looks good?
Okay.
So the county department did a hell of a job.
Well, actually, I was gonna call in your assembly, you looked so peaceful back there, I didn't want to get you upset. Okay, need a motion to, um, I mean, a motion to the recess?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.